Good evening. I would like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Directors to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now Astor will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Astor. The first item on our agenda this evening is Item A, which is on page 1, and this is the 2017-18 Certified Budget Amendment Public Hearing. And so at this time, I would declare the public hearing open and ask if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board on the budget, to please come forward and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Jessie, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sue. All those in favor of closing the Certified Budget Amendment Public Hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is Item B, and this is a board celebration for why Waterloo schools. And I will ask Sheri Wright to come up and give her piece. We started this last summer at our opening day. Dr. Lindeman did our program based on why Waterloo schools, why people have chosen to work and be part of the Waterloo schools. And so tonight, Ms. Wright is going to share with us her vision and her ideas about why Waterloo. Welcome. Don't worry, it's not televised. Yeah, it is. She's doing it live on Facebook, too.
Okay, of course.
Of course.
So I want to first tell you thank you, I think, for this opportunity. I thought, wow, it's really nice to be able to reflect on my years in Waterloo and try to identify some of those real special occasions. But the more I did it, the more nervous I got. I don't know if I'm really thankful for this or not, but here you go. So those of you who know me know that I'm a person that loves music. And it's odd that Bev said, well, she can always just sing, because that was kind of in my plan. I'm one of those people, I believe that there's a music, there's a song, and there's music for every situation in life. For happy times, I use music to celebrate. For sad times, I use music to cheer me up. For anxious times, I use music to calm me down. For troubled times, I use music to remind me that everything's going to be all right. So for every situation, I use music for my own motivation. So this evening, I'm going to take you on a little musical journey while I tell you why Waterloo. So Whitney Houston's song says, "I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride. To make it easier, let the children's laughter remind us of how we used to be. I decided long ago never to walk in any one shadow. If I fail, if I succeed, at least I will live as I believe. No matter what they take from me, they can't take away my dignity, because the greatest love of all is happening to me. I found the greatest love of all inside of me."
Wow.
So I chose this song because in so many ways, it describes how I feel about the kids and why I worked so hard to push them to be all that they can be. I came to the Waterloo schools in 1982 as an employee. I actually came to Waterloo schools in 1959-ish. When, I came in 1982 when my sister Helen Walton Walker was the principal at Roosevelt Elementary. And she called me one day and asked me to come and work for her during the summer, because she was getting ready for her school year. So she thought she had some things she wanted to do, and she said, "Why don't you come on over and help me?" And I said, "Okay." So in the midst of cutting and pasting and doing bulletin boards and collating pages for the handbook and all those kind of things, I ended up, as a result of all that, that August, with my first contract for Waterloo schools as a parent educator. In those days, they called them teacher associates. So thus began my journey. I have so many rewarding experiences in this district. It would probably take me all day and maybe even a few days to be able to share them all with you. But somewhere between parent educator, clerk typist, and homeschool worker, I realized how much I really loved what I did and how important it was to me to be a part of watching kids excel, how exciting it was when the light bulbs came on, and how critical it was that they took advantage of every learning opportunity and used it for their growth. That's why Waterloo. Those three positions gave me the chance to work directly with kids, to organize them, to work together and support each other, to take them out of the building and broaden their scope, teaching them that education didn't just happen in between the walls, but there was a whole world outside the walls just waiting to teach them something. I got the chance to let them know that that something could be positive and beneficial to them, but it could also be negative and detrimental. With the support of my administrators, I organized girl groups at Roosevelt and East High. I co-facilitated human relations and diversity groups to help them learn how to get along with each other and then how to get along with everybody else. I took students to represent in community functions and to participate in workshops and seminars that were provided by the district. And pretty soon, it was, whenever you wanted a group of students to represent Waterloo schools, just call Sheri. That's why Waterloo. Waterloo put many people in my life to support me. It was Walt Cunningham, then president of East High and, president, the other P, principal of East High, and Elizabeth Meriwether, who stayed on my case about going back to school. And when I graduated from Upper Iowa with my bachelor's, it was Dr. Bev Smith who said to me, "I have an opportunity for you." Now, you've got to know, I've been working with Bev for quite a while, so when she says, "I have an opportunity for you," I knew that it was probably best that I took off running and headed for the hills. She had more confidence in me than I had in myself, but she, and she had actually written a job description for this position based upon what I was already doing in my, in my interactions with kids and their families. I became one of the first, excuse me. I became one of the first family support workers for Waterloo schools. Before I knew it, I was presenting workshops and organizing parenting classes and providing family learning opportunities for self-sufficiency, and only God knows what else. These, these are three of my favorite people, and they helped me realize that what we have to be, that we have to be concerned for the whole child, not just who they are when they enter that door, but what they bring with them, everything that they bring with them. That's why Waterloo. So Harold Melvin in the Blue Notes wrote a song that says, "Wake up, all the teachers, time to teach a new way. And maybe they'll listen to what you have to say. For they're the ones who's coming up, the world is in their hands. So when you try to teach them, teach them the very best you can. Oh, 'cause the world won't get no better if we just let it be. The world won't get no better. We gotta change the world, you and me." So after a couple of years as family support worker, Deb Reilly, who was the guidance counselor at Roosevelt, persuaded me to go back to school again. She saw some leadership skills in me that I wasn't seeing. But we partnered together for a long time and worked together for Roosevelt families and students. So while working on our masters, I spent half days as a family support worker and the other half in the classroom. And here began my real journey of making an impact on learning. It was there that I was able to put pedagogy and instructional strategies that I'd learned in place. But it was also there that I learned that Waterloo schools had professional development expectations and specific practices that they believed to be significant for every student. They identified specifics that worked in certain classrooms. They identified some differentiation. They identified their expectation for cultural competence and how critical it was that every culture was acknowledged and appreciated. And ironically, it was also that I learned that I didn't want to be confined to the classroom at all, that what I really wanted to do was teach those who taught. And how many more children could I reach if I taught those who taught as opposed to being the teacher? So at that point, I decided I wanted to go into administration. That's why Waterloo. So now I've spent 17 years in administration, four years at the elementary, four years at middle school, and now nine years at high school. Waterloo schools has spent numerous hours developing its administrators. We've been consistently involved in leadership initiatives from many perspectives. We've been trained in content, particularly math and literacy. Formative assessment and authentic tasks have been at the reins. Not only formative assessment, but authentic tasks, which call for specifics and assessments that are not so formal. We've been in team-building mode from, with collaborative efforts, from team-building leaders to data-driven decision-making to multi-tiered support systems to professional learning communities. We've studied equity issues, including cultural competency and implicit and unconscious bias. We've learned the importance of distributive leadership and having the right drivers in place, and the list goes on and on. Because Waterloo believes in pouring into its leadership and helping us to become effective and quality leaders. That's why Waterloo. So in closing, I want to leave this song with you by the Williams Brothers. It says, "Heartaches, I've had my share of heartaches, but I'm still here. Trouble, I've had my share of troubles, but I'm still here. Bruises, I've taken lumps and bruises, but I'm still here. Loneliness, I've had my share of loneliness, but I'm still here. For through it all, I made it through. Another day's journey, God kept me here. Through it all, I made it through. Another day's journey, God kept me here." So I've spent 35 years with the Waterloo schools. It hasn't always been good, but I believe the good far outweighs the bad. I'm currently at East High where I work with a wonderful team of professionals. Marla, Josh, Brian, and Brenton are awesome to work with, and we support each other. We complement each other as we define our strengths and our weaknesses in each. We've laughed together over cheese and crackers. We've dined sufficiently with ribs and all the trimmings. But when it comes to being about the business of East High School, we've taken care of business. So that's, with that's going on, so of all that's going to change now, as Marla is going to be leaving us and things will look a little bit different. But Marla has been a wonderful model for me, and I know that whatever the future holds for me, she has made me better, a better leader. So whatever happens in the years to come, I'm in Waterloo on assignment. My job's not quite done yet, and I'll be here until the good Lord says, "Do something different." But I've been good to Waterloo, and Waterloo schools has been good to me, and that's why Waterloo schools. And that's why I'm still here. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri, that's going to be one tough act to follow, and I feel, I feel really sorry for whoever has June. I think that might have been the crowning achievement right there. So thank you, thank you, thank you. That was fabulous. What a treat. The next item on our agenda is also a celebration. This is the board celebration for Teacher Appreciation Week, and this is Item C on page 4. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education recognize May 7th through 11th, 2018, as Teacher Appreciation Week in Waterloo.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
All right, you two. Rhonda, okay. Excellent. All right, so that that's on the floor. I'm going to turn it over to our board secretary. She's going to tell us a little bit about the books that are going to be given.
I'm definitely not doing this in music. You all would be leaving if that was the case. So every year, we like to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week, which was actually last week. But the Board of Education purchases a book that will go into each of our buildings. So this year, we got, it's called "The Digger and the Flower" for our pre-K buildings. This is the first year that we've done pre-K. But I just thought this was, looked like a cute little book, so we'll pass that around. That one is on brightly.com's 18 Must Read Picture Books of 2018. Elementary buildings will get "After the Fall: How Humpty Dumpty Got Back Up Again." So it's a good book of resilience for the elementary kiddos. Middle schools are going to receive "Hello Universe." This is a Newberry Medal winner. And this one also is kind of a, there's kind of a resilience theme in all of the books. So this will go out to the middle schools. And then high schools are going to read, this is a 2017 National Book Award winner. It's called "Far From the Tree" by Robert Benway, or Robin Benway. This is actually one I think I'm going to read myself. So just want to, and thanks to all of our awesome teachers. We just want to dedicate these books to the media centers.
That's great. Thank you. I'll pass these down for everybody to look at. Anybody else want to add anything to that? I guess we can go to the libraries ourselves and get them if we are interested. So, awesome. All right, then, all those in favor of approving those books for Teacher Appreciation Week, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again to all of our teachers. We sure appreciate you. The next item on our agenda, then, is information from individuals and delegations. And I'm wondering, before I read my little thing about privacy and personnel, if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board? All right, then, seeing no one, we will move on to our consent agenda. And this evening, it consists of eight items: the minutes of the April 23rd, 2018, regular board meeting, and the May 2nd, 2018, special board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, which are Item E, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which are Item F, the Joint Education Service Agreement between Hawkeye Community College and the Waterloo Community School District, Item G, the Area Education Agency Food Purchasing Agreement for 2018-19, Item H, the Sprint Connect Ed Grant, which is Item I, the Cooperative Sponsorship Agreements, which are Item J, and the adjusted board meeting dates, which are Item K. Are there any items which board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item I.
Item I.
Item J.
And Item J. Anything else?
Item E.
And Item E. All right. So then, could I get Items D, F, G, H, and K on the table, please? Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, India. Then, all those in favor of approving those Items D, F, G, H, and K, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Item E, which is on page 10. This is Personnel Appointments and Adjustments. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the, I'm sorry, that's not the right, that is not the right thing that I'm reading. I got to get to the, that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Thanks, Jessie, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, India, and discussion, Astor?
The first would be for the resignations. Midway down the third page, Cor Turner, the Executive Director of Student and At-Risk Services, it says resignation on there instead of retirement. Is that normal?
They're, they're both seen for our purposes as the same, but she is obviously going to be retired.
Okay.
I think her letter probably says she was resigning, but so that's how it ended up in the book. For all practical purposes, it's the same thing.
But retirement is also going in the book also, right?
Yeah, yeah. I think what happens when they submit a letter, whatever's on the letter, is that they put in the book. If I caught it out, it probably wouldn't have been.
And then on the leaves of absence to be approved, the second line, it had an amendment from the board agenda in February. So is that, is the new date the date that they'll be returning, or is that the date that they'll go out again?
I can, I can look into that to see what the amendment was. If the amendment may be the type of leave. I know that this individual has not returned.
Okay.
And will not be returning in this school year. So, but I can't tell you exactly what the amendment is.
So it can possibly be two separate, two different leaves or same leave?
It's been one leave. It's one, one absence. It may be the type of leave. She may have gone from a health and family responsibility to, first, I don't, I don't know. I can look into it and tell you exactly what it is.
Okay.
Anything further, Astor? Anyone else on personal appointments?
Well, I guess this would be a time to, Dr. Smith and I were talking about a little bit before, that if anyone knows good qualified coaches, we have some good positions that we need some good leadership from coaches. So just as we're talking personnel, we need some coaches. So for the public, if they have people that are interested, call HR.
Go online.
Look online. But we are looking for good qualified coaches.
And we have some significant jobs. We have head high school positions, coaching positions. We've got middle school positions. People who want to get their feet wet and move in as an assistant, there are opportunities there as well. So if you had all thought about becoming a coach, this would be a great time to jump in and get a feel for it and see if that's something that you'd like to continue to do and move up.
Great, Sue. Thank you for that reminder. All right, anything further then on personal appointments and adjustments? Then all those in favor of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item I, which is on page 33. This is the Sprint Connect Ed Grant. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept with gratitude the donation of 300 lines of cellular internet service for three years from Sprint and approve the purchase of 300 hotspots to leverage this service.
So moved.
Thanks, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jessie. And our ever faithful IT director, Matt O'Brien, is here this evening to answer questions. I'm not sure who pulled this.
I pulled it. And I just, I guess I wanted to pull it specifically to thank Sprint, because this is an awesome donation, and it's kind of hidden in the weeds. And I just, I just wondered about your relationship with them and, and just how we thank them.
Yeah, Sprint has been incredibly generous. They actually donated, for those that weren't on the board at that time, 250 lines two years ago when we started the endeavor of our kind of new model for Chromebook distribution at the middle school level. And I had some contacts there that I started dialogue with this year to see whether they would consider giving us an expansion of that, given that our expanded, or our program has expanded past what we originally launched it as. And they've been incredibly generous to be able to allow us with that, with a very generous donation of 300 hotspots. We're definitely very appreciative of them. This is a nationwide program that they offer school districts the opportunity to apply for. So it's, the team that I've worked with at Sprint is actually a nationwide contact program manager for their connected initiative.
Is there still an unfulfilled need in this area, or are we pretty good shape?
Unfulfilled need as far as internet access?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what I would say is, it depends on how you measure that. I think that there, there are certainly still households out there that have no internet access at all. There's other households that I would say are underserved in that they may have internet access in the form of a parent's cellphone or something along those lines. But that isn't necessarily conducive for a student to be able to use, or they may have one computer in the household for multiple families, or multiple students or multiple family members that need to share that. So I think this is an excellent tool to be able to kind of plug those gaps. And the hotspots, we configure them to work specifically only for district Chromebooks. So it's a great way to be able to ensure that they're actually used for those purposes and are dedicated for those educational purposes of that tool that we're giving students.
What percent of our students have high-speed internet at home?
I don't know a percent. I don't know if we, Tara, do you know if we've done any surveys? I don't, I don't know of any surveys that we've done with an exact number. Dr. Lindeman, were you?
You know, I, it's higher, I know that it's higher than we think it is. But a lot of times, if we ask them, "Do you have access at home?", if they have it through their phone, if they have a smartphone, they will mark yes. So I'm not really sure, because I've seen numbers anywhere from 70%, and I've actually seen numbers up to 90% of people who have internet access. So you know, I don't know that we really know exactly what it is, but it's, it's quite high, actually. It would be the vast But it's, it's quite high, actually. It would be the vast majority of the people who would have access to.
And those seventy to ninety percent, those are the nationwide statistics that I've seen as well. But a- again, back to that point of just because you mark yes that you have it, doesn't mean that it's actually available to use on a device that you need to be productive, um, for, for school.
Right.
Well, and definitely we'd be subjective to, I mean, you can go to Panera, you can go, so if the question is if you have access.
Yep.
Of course, you're gonna say, I have access. We would need to rephrase that, do I have access at home, or do I have access specifically somewhere?
At home.
We have, we have asked that, and I, for some reason, I'd have to go back and look, but I know that we did a survey years back. And, and it was, I think it was seventy-six percent, for some reason, that's sticking out at me. But, and I think that was the question, do you have internet access at home? But I don't know, again, if it's a computer or a smartphone, or, you know.
And that's really, if, you know, I don't have the, the quantitative answer. But from a qualitative perspective, that's really the feedback that I've, I've heard. Is, is just because you have access at home doesn't mean that you actually have that available access, which quite honestly goes along with the Chromebook initiative as well. Um, just because there's a cellphone or a computer in the house doesn't mean that it's actually available to the, the students to actually be able to utilize.
So what's the process of allocating these hotspots?
So, from a district perspective, we actually allocate them to the buildings. Um, so I think I put that in the, the board agenda, how they'll be split between east-west. And then we'll have, uh, a remaining that are able to go to Expo, as well as fill some gaps on a request basis at the middle school level. We then have a, um, an application process that the buildings use. Um, so basically, you're eligible, if you are eligible for free and reduced lunch, if your income meets that threshold. Um, the family then can s, uh, fill out the application process. And then the, the schools typically allocate those on a first, um, first-serve basis, um, while holding a handful of them back to not necessarily be checked out for the entire year, but just to be more on a short-term nature of, okay, Mrs. Smith's class is doing a project for this week. So we want to make sure that those, those students have access to fill in kind of those holes for that particular week. So the short answer is, is it's, we allocate them from the district level to schools. And then the schools have a uniform application that the, the parents fill out as part of the, the, um, pieces of literature that they get from, from us, from the Chromebook initiative.
And without this grant, how much of a budget would this put a dent, I guess, in the technology budget if we didn't have this grant, to be able to have this access?
Yeah, so the value of the grant is over four hundred thousand dollars. And that's measured, basically, forty dollars a month, which is the, the retail cost of the, the service per line. Uh, and then it's across the three-year period, so forty times three times, uh, twelve times three hundred, basically, is what that equates to. Um, so the value is, is pretty substantial. Our only cost is the cost of the hotspots themselves. And, and Sprint actually sells those at cost, so it's around just over thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, that we'll have, which is just a one-time cost for us to buy the hotspots themselves. Um, they'll then be district property that then we check out. So, um, basically, it's, it's, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars of the technology budget is devoted to buying those hotspots, again, as a one-time cost.
It seems like the best information might be from the teachers. The teachers say, why are these two students are disadvantaged because they don't have?
Oh, and a- absolutely. I'm sorry, Lyle. I, I probably didn't do a very good job at painting that picture of how it actually wor, takes place in the buildings. But I, I know that that's how it actually takes place in the buildings, is there's constant communication between the teachers and the schools, teacher librarian or tech integrationist in the media center, as well as the office. So it, it really, that communication absolutely does take place, for sure.
That's all I had, though. You know, I'm, thank you for the explanation. I just, I just, I mean, that's a four hundred thousand dollar gift.
Yes.
Yes.
Very thankful to Sprint for that.
So, as one of our starred partners or something.
Indeed.
A big name on a banner somewhere.
There we go.
WCC sponsorship.
Thank you.
It's great. And, and to ensuring that all of our kids have access, which is really important. So, thank you, Matt.
You bet.
I just had a quick question. I gotta be quicker than that and get on here.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
I didn't mean to cut y'all.
No, that's fine. Uh, Lyle is quicker than me. I gotta get, get myself together, so I can keep up with him. But is it possible for us to do a three or four-question survey, um, for our Chromebook users, um, toward the end of the term, just to see quantitatively how effective they've been?
So, if you look back to a couple, I guess it was a couple board meetings ago, when Ron Moreland, uh, and I were here, we actually reviewed, um, some survey results that we've actually done. It's actually a survey called Clarity that the AEA has put out. We've been doing that once a year, because that was, i- it's a long survey. But the reason why we've adopted on that is because it allows us to actually compare some different results, um, at both a local as well as a state level. So Ron highlighted just a few of those pieces. Um, and if you'd like to get a little deeper into that, that data, um, I, I'm, I'm sure he would be happy to, to go through that with you. Like I said, we've been doing it just once a year, so kind of looking at the, the, um, for sixth grade now, we've got two years' worth of data, obviously, but we've been doing it once a year. Um, just from the time burden perspective, our, our schools, quite honestly, are, are a little over-surveyed, and it's a fairly lengthy survey. So we've been trying to balance the time it takes out of the class for, for the, the students to take in, as well as not putting another burden on teachers. But, um, that is something that we've been looking at.
You know, I, I don't know what type of surveys, and I do, I work in in higher ed. I know our students are over-surveyed. Our, our faculty members probably are too. But for the money that we've invested in these Chromebooks, I would imagine that, a- as a district, we can find time in the classroom to make sure that our students do, do the survey. So that we'll know what, what we've spent our money on. And we'll know how effective.
You're saying twice, twice a year to look at the same cohort within the grade level, is what you're asking?
I just want to know how effective the Chromebooks have been in, um, dispensing curriculum.
Sure.
And, um, and, and again, I think i- if, if our students are being over-surveyed, then we need to take a look at what we're surveying them on and, and how beneficial those surveys are. Because students will tend to, to not answer their emails or not do surveys if, if they're asked a lot of questions. So I, I guess we need to evaluate what we're asking our students. But for this, we, we need to find out. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, you bet. Um, just to kind of expand on that, the other point I want to highlight is, it's gonna, it's gonna be really impossible to get, I think, quantitative data in terms of the effectiveness of just a single initiative such as this, since it is just a tool and we have so many other quality instructional initiatives going on in the classroom. Um, so any survey that we did, which is really what that Clarity survey focuses on, is, is perception data, both from a student perspective, as well as from a teacher perspective. And that survey truly does measure across the wide spectrum, um, the level of access, the level of technology use, uh, the level of use, you know, of the actual tool within instruction, that type of thing. So it just goes really deep, which is why it gets rather lengthy. Um, you know, we can certainly talk with our, with Dr. McNulty and the Ed Services folks and Dr. Lindeman about, um, whether it makes sense to continue to use that versus whether we would want to, um, look at something a little bit more brief. Um, but I just want to make sure that we were on the same page, that, you know, it, it really is going to be kind of a, a perception data of, of use and not necessarily a, a quantitative result. We can get some quantitative results as far as how often the technology has been used, but not necessarily, um, you know, directly correlate an impact to, to student achievement, just because I don't think that would be fair to do with so many other instructional initiatives happening.
So for, for, for the listeners and viewers, let me, you know, we're throwing around a lot of words like qualitative and quantitative. So, um, but basically, what I was asking is, um, for example, there's a student Chromebook survey, um, that I was looking at that asks questions like, um, have you found the Chromebook easy to use? Um, do you use Chromebook to submit assignments online?
Yep.
And different things like that. So when we talk about quantitative, what we're asking is a number. Um, how many students are using it, how often they use it. So it, it kind of answers the questions, how much. And the qualitative things that Matt was talking about is the perceptions. How, how do students feel about using those Chromebooks? So I hope that kind of makes a little bit of sense.
And I think it's valuable to take a look, perhaps a little bit deeper at the cer, the current survey that we're giving. Because as you said, Ron sort of touched on some of those highlights. But I think maybe just digging a little deeper into that and seeing what the survey actually found out would be helpful to us first, and then to determine whether or not it's effective.
Maybe what net steps are, what else you're interested in.
And I kind of think it'll be more interesting, maybe, two years from now, as we get our first set of middle schoolers into high school that had three years using that technology. So we will have a comparison of, some comparison of how kids deal with ALM when the class made a grade of four versus all three.
I can, I can support that. A couple years ago, we went down this path and, and when we first discussed this, and I thought that eventually this should show up, the benefit should show up on some sort of cumulative assessment, standardized test scores, or whatever it was. The answer was no, uh, we don't expect any difference. Uh, I've never accepted that answer, or no, we can't differentiate it from other, other. But still, comprehensively, those, since we've done that, I would hope we would see an improvement
Yep.
in comprehensive test scores, not attributed necessarily to this, but attributed to the whole process that this is part of.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Uh, so I haven't ever accepted that test scores will never show.
It definitely leverages the access for kids to take stuff home and do it, that maybe didn't have a computer at home or something. I mean, there's definitely, I mean.
I'm just looking at the, the, the grade level, uh, improvement on the tests.
Right.
You know, what is, what is the absolute score for?
Standard score?
G something. A score where you look at the test assessment and say, well, they're at grade level six point two.
Yeah, the, um, GRE, the grade, or G, jelly, grade level equi.
It seems like when you compare historically, that if we look now at the eighth graders that have had two or three years, or the ninth graders that have had three years, there ought to be something different than if we looked three years ago, four years ago, five years ago.
I, I do just want to reinforce that I don't, if, if we ever made the case that there would be no impact, then I apologize, because I don't think that was ever our intention. I, I, I do remember that conversation where we did reinforce that it would be very difficult to differentiate this initiative from several other instructional initiatives. And then we've also focused on this just being a tool to enhance grade instruction, and it is not, you know, the primary driver. It's, it's a tool that teachers can utilize in their instruction.
Matt, basically, overlapping initiatives going on at the same time as this.
Yep.
All of which moved a needle in a positive way.
Absolutely.
And you specifically said, there's no magic bullet.
No silver bullet, absolutely. Yep.
So I don't know where we're at. Is there an actionable item out of this?
Yeah, there is. The actual item was to accept the gift from Sprint.
So thanks again, Sprint.
Yes, thanks again, Sprint.
That was my intent, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if, without further ado, is it all right if I call the question? Can we vote on this, or do we still have? Okay, awesome. Then all those in favor of accepting this very generous, uh, hotspot donation from, um, Sprint, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, Matt. Clearly, we are not without question, so I'm sure you'll be back to see us. So. Uh, the next item on the consent agenda that was pulled is item J, and this is on page thirty-five. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the attached cooperative sponsorship agreements.
Sumo.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second?
Second.
And discussion?
I just had a question. Um, so the, I was wondering how the agreement between districts and schools were determined? Uh, was it because of numbers, uh, or location, uh, close proximity to the school? Um, I noticed that, um, there are differences between, uh, the male and female, uh, sports. So for instance, uh, second line item down, uh, Waterloo Christian, boys soccer to west, but girls soccer to east. And also, Columbus, the same thing, uh, girls swimming to east, but boys swimming to west. So I was just wondering how, how that.
I think yours is a combined program.
Well, soccer, not, the girls soccer's combined anyway, so they just got an east host school for west anyway. That's why Waterloo Christian goes on girls soccer to, to east.
Cause it looked like Astor.
It would be combined.
Right, right. And Waterloo schools has to be the receiving agent, even though they're both Waterloo schools. Does that make sense?
I had that same question, and I went through him. It looked like that the boys' sports host would be west, and the girls' sports host would be east. So they would be reciprocated either way, because I had the same question. I'm like, why is this, you know, going here and there? But it does look like consistent throughout, that all the girls' sports, east would be the host school even for west. And in boys' sports, west is the host school for east.
Except for.
There's no west high girls swimming, is the bottom line.
Right.
It's Waterloo swimming.
Waterloo swimming.
It's Waterloo swimming, just like soccer.
Waterloo swimming, Waterloo soccer.
And Waterloo soccer, and east is just, and, and that's because one athletic director is, you know, they, it's just so that when they put it in the system with the Iowa High School Athletic Association, there is, it had, that they have to be associated with a host school. And that what the athletic director can, you know, work with them on it. So.
So.
And, yeah, Willie could do an update on that, because I had a lot of questions.
I can tell you what, the one exception is, girls cross-country went to west. And that exception was because, at the time it was combined, west had a cross, girls cross-country coach, east did not. East requested to be combined, so since the coach is already under staff at west, they combined it to west, that's the host school there. So that's how that one worked.
Right.
So. So with the, with the sports that aren't combined, how do we determine what school receives the, so Wopsey Valley, boys soccer to west high?
I can't tell you that.
You know, we can find out. Yeah.
Is it, okay. I was wondering if it was up to the, the school or the individual, or can they choose their proximity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think.
And maybe it was numbers somewhat driven to, because.
Could have been.
Yeah, I think.
Numbers that are out for the sport or, or school numbers?
Well, it could be also, on some of them, is, is, if it's going to pack class. I mean, cause there is, at least on a girl's side, I think, there's still four A, five A on some of that, so. I, I don't know if any of these are four A, five A. I think, I thought. I think it's just volleyball, volleyball and girls' basketball, I believe, are just five A. I thought softball was four A, five A.
So, they're not in new agreements.
Yeah, the, the, the higher-profile sports typically don't have the agreement with reciprocated.
Right, so class probably wouldn't be a.
Exactly.
My assumption, Waterloo Christian being vicinity to west, but we get so very few students out of there.
Yeah, and I'm gonna check into this, because, um, my, my recollection, and I don't, I don't know this for two things. First of all, these are all renewals, and so there is no requirement that they come before the board. We just, in Waterloo, we've just always brought them before the board. The only thing that comes before the board for, for approval is new.
Right.
New agreements. But we, we've just always brought these before you, just because it's good to see those. So that's, that's one thing. But, um, the second thing is, I, for some reason, I'm recalling that there's something about, um, the closest that location is supposed to be. But the only thing I would be, I think that looks like that plays out, with the exception of the Wopsey Valley, because there's one Wopsey Valley that goes to
And Fairbank.
west, and there's one that goes to east. So.
One that goes to east, so the girls soccer.
But the soccer's combined for the girls, so it would be the same thing.
So maybe that's what, maybe that's why. So.
The Wopsey Valley would be in proximity to east, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, yeah, that's, so that's what I, that's what I was thinking it was. So I think we're just gonna have to get that answer back.
Their boys soccer goes to west.
Yeah, these are all renewals, and so maybe there was a reason why it started that way, and then it was renewed as that. But I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but we'll get that answer for you.
Yeah, I think the only one really stands out is the, the one soccer, but it's been, they've been with west for some time now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
For soccer, I don't know how long, and I don't know why the decision was. But I know it, I know there were discussions on another school sharing wrestling. And what I remember was that, um, that school come in and requested one of the two high schools. And the conversation went, we won't even discuss what school until we, we'll, we'll agree that we'll share. But then discussion of where it goes happens afterwards, so. I believe I remember that, even before I was on the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then Jane, I had another question, as far as.
Yes.
Um, it isn't, um, Ed, I don't know what you call it. It's more of a club sport, but trap shooting? I know they have reciprocals with that, so I was wondering about that too. And that's not on here at all.
I don't think, because we don't host it. We actually share, I think, with another school. We don't, we're not actually the host school on that.
Right. And those, we, we'll do those agreements. We, those come in throughout the summer. We still do some of those.
West was the host, though, previously.
Yeah, west had.
Yeah, west had. They hosted it.
My daughter was on that team.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the. Yeah. The, the Dunkin' Tim was one I was thinking about after on, on wrestling. That was last year after the Denver-Trepolos split, so.
All right. So are you all right to renew those tonight? Is that, do you want me to, we can pull them, we can table them?
Can we?
Sure.
Well, they're just a, they're just a renewal. I guess, I guess.
It's just a renewal, and I believe there's a deadline, but it's. Okay.
So do you, do you continue to re, do you continue to renew? If you don't have a, a definite reason, why, I mean, do you just renew it every year?
They are, they're reviewed and renewed on an annual basis is what.
Yeah.
They continue every year unless they're stopped. So.
What's their petition?
Yeah, so they're, they're continuing. It's on a continuous unless it's, unless we stop, stop the.
Right.
Contract, so.
So are we renewing?
Or suppose if the other schools stop too.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So I'm not sure in that case, I'm not sure Pam whether they would need to be renewed by a certain deadline because technically they don't really have to come before the board, but we just always have, so.
Right.
I mean, we probably can, I would guess.
We're renewing and we don't know where it's, where it started, or how long it's been, or the reason why.
Yeah. If, in that case, I think I would probably recommend that you just table it.
Okay.
And then we'll get more information for you. We can certainly do that. And if it's, if there's a deadline, we'll have to bring it back before you before that time, so.
Okay. All right, so we will move to then table item J, which is the cooperative sponsorship agreements, and all those in favor, please signify.
Postpone is the correct.
Postpone, sorry, somebody said table.
If you table it, it has to be brought back at the same meeting.
Gotcha, okay. So I would entertain a motion to postpone the cooperative sponsorship agreement.
Sumo.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, India. And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chair votes aye.
And I will check with you just to get, make sure that I get the questions that we want answered. I don't, I'm not sure. So we'll, we'll work on that at a later time and make sure we have the right questions.
Okay. So that motion, or that item then has been postponed. Thank you. All right, so that concludes our consent agenda for this evening. The next item then is item L, which is our board policy changes. This is a first reading of these this evening. I'll ask Tara Thomas to come forward on these. Um, we are looking at board policies two oh nine point one, five oh two point three, five oh two point seven, and five one two point zero. Good evening, Tara.
Good evening, thank you.
Yes.
The first board policy change proposed is for board staff communications, two oh nine point one, and quite a few changes. Pam Arndorfer, the board secretary, can address any questions because that is a policy that she works to oversee and collaborate with the committee. The proposed five oh two point three change is truly just a title change to update the language. And then proposed five oh two point seven has a couple minor changes as well to just reword some of the way that it's stated, but not a change in meaning per se. And then the proposed change for five twelve is the added paragraph, or the added sentence rather, at the end of the third paragraph to combine the paragraph below that has been struck. And then there are a few extra words in the, at the end here, including that last line about the handheld technology devices. So once again, as with all of them, we're just trying to update the policies as the needs changed based on technological advances. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, as can Pam about the first proposal.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, sorry Tara, we have just a momentary confirmation going on over here. Okay. This is the first reading, correct? Yes. So we can make adjustments before the second reading? Correct. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, so we're not, none of these, we're not voting on any of them tonight, so. Does anybody have any questions for Tara on the other three that are here listed? The outside credits, the possession, and the student use of handheld technology? All right. Thank you, Tara. Look forward to seeing you in June. All right, the next item on our agenda then is item M, and this is the two thousand sixteen seventeen district financial audit, and the recommended motion, I'm going to get to that here, is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the district finance committee to receive and place on file the two thousand sixteen seventeen district financial audit?
Sumo.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. And discussion, I know Michael Coughlin is here this evening, and certainly Lyle and Sue and I are on the finance committee, and maybe, Michael, I'll let you walk us through the beginning part of this, and then, Lyle and Sue, if you want to add anything from our time that we spent, um, with the auditors, you can do so.
Okay, I'm just going to review a couple of things that I've mentioned in the exhibit. Um, last meeting, I gave you all a copy of the audit. If you set it aside, it looks like this.
Light reading.
And you also got a certified financial statement that has, um, called the CAFR, which has additional exhibits in the back, and it, it goes into a lot of demographics of the Waterloo district, from tax rates to taxpayers, to ten years of history of staffing and so on. So there's, there's some interest there as well as, uh, the boring numbers. Um, but the audit is required every year by the Code of Iowa, and an outside audit firm has to do it. So we have to employ an outside, uh, accounting agency that, uh, goes through and reviews the audit under, um, some criteria of the, obviously the amounts and the disclosures in the financial statements. But it also does a thorough review of our internal controls. How does money pass from one place to the next? Who does the approving? Uh, is there documentation and signatures on expenditures and contracts for staff and so on? That we have all that in place. Um, it also is dealing with compliance with state and federal laws. Um, so all of these things go together to ensure to the public that the record keeping is done accurately and to code, and all the expectations that the state, uh, requires in the Code of Iowa. Um, we have completed ten years with Hogan Hansen. Dennis Meiskins was the chief auditor. He wasn't, uh, in charge of every audit. There were other people below him that did fieldwork, but he has always been the one that did the final review. He was always our first contact for questions and concerns, which we used him very much on a ongoing basis when, uh, things would change and we would need to adjust accurately to make sure our financial statements reflected what was necessary. Um, I did mention in the last, second to the last paragraph that we received an unqualified opinion of the financial statements for the fifteenth consecutive, nineteenth consecutive year, and that means a good report when it's unqualified. So that's what, um, they reported to the board. Um, there were several financial, uh, exhibits that he went through, and as you remember, as we, uh, closed last year, that our balances were, uh, all in good order and had increased during the year. Uh, and actually financially, the district has been in some of the best shape it's been in recent history. So we had good reports with that, but there was, um, a few findings, um, in the back that they also have to report. Some of them are, no matter how minimal they're required to mention them in the findings. Um, one of them was an enrollment, enrollment adjustments. There was a couple of, uh, kids that were, uh, inaccurately counted, and it totaled to one point seven four nine kids out of ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-four point eight enrollment. So as I said, Mary, a very, uh, minimal, um, correction, but it was one that they are required to report. Another one they're required to report, and we'll talk about that a little bit in the budget amendment, but the budget amendment has four components to it, that we have to set maximum expenditures. And last year, we even did amend the budget as we're going to consider tonight, but a last second, the last, late in the year change by the state reclassified, uh, a large group of our expenses. Actually, the, the TLC coaches moved from one category to another, um, and even after the amendment, it, in, it exceeded the maximum expenditures that the board had certified. It does not change any of the numbers. We don't correct it to put it back in a different area to make it work. We are just, um, required by law that the auditor notes that in one of the areas that we exceeded the maximum expenditures. And that's just, uh, it's then so noted to the board, and the district responds that we will, uh, keep a close watch of that, and, uh, they accept that as an answer, and we need to proceed into the next year. So that's part of the reason for the amendment action tonight. So just in, um, one other number, I wanted to state that, um, this is all based on cash basis. This has nothing to do with authority. This is just like the books of a business. How much money do you have in the bank when the year is done? And that's the fund balance, and for the general fund, it went from eleven million four hundred thousand to eight hundred million eight hundred thousand. So we saw a significant increase. We had done some cutting, as you've heard me say before, some adjusting. We are, um, applying some of those savings into the future operations of the district. So, uh, with that, that's all I'm going to report at this point, unless you have questions, and I would turn it back to the finance committee if you have any comments to make.
I think, I think you said cash basis. You're not using that in terms of the accounting method.
It's not cash basis. It's called modified accrual.
Okay.
So we still recognize receivables and payables in that number.
Yeah. Another question that didn't come up this year that I just recall now was that is the Ipers, sometimes in the past, either late in the game or after the fact, if, seemed like if Ipers didn't earn what they thought they should earn, that that became a liability, potential liability on our books.
We have a, we have a memorandum entry based on that because it's not, uh, a certain number. It's an actuarial of saying, how much money would the district, uh, have to contribute to Ipers to be able to support all of the employees that will retire in the next twenty years? So if you can tell me who's going to retire in the next twenty years.
I would love to know.
I mean, that's, that's really the reality of what it is. They're trying to get, uh, a, a picture by every local district saying, is the system contributing enough money to support the whole structure of Ipers? So it's just another tool that they use and, or the Iper, the state Ipers board, um, and that did, um, constitute an increase in Ipers for next year. So they are contrib, continuing to try and strengthen that. Uh, you've heard me say before that Ipers, Iowa's retirement system is one of the strongest in the country, if not the strongest. It is a model for several other states, but they are very diligent in trying to keep that, uh, strong for the, the immediate retirees and for those in the next twenty to thirty years.
But this year, it did not result in a late adjustment.
We had an adjustment. I don't, I'd have to look to see what that number was, but, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a large number this year. We did see a pretty major number when they, when they started this, uh, in the audit a year ago. Um, so that was something that was a, a major change to the financial statements, but it's really not a cash fund balance entry. It's just a memorandum saying, here's the information they collected according to Waterloo.
Quick, quick question. Uh, does this on page twenty, where it says salaries and benefits, uh, summary cost and rankings, are we commensurate with the other UEN districts in terms of, um, per student ranking of salaries and benefits?
It de, it depends on which lens that you look, and I'll give you a couple of examples.
How about if I were a parent? What would that lens look like?
Well, when you're looking at the budget of Waterloo, we spend about eighty percent of our budget on salary and benefits. But that doesn't differentiate between teachers, paras, administrators, um, so another measure.
Let me ask another question. Are our administrator salaries commensurate with the rest of the school district, UEN school districts?
Yes, they are.
Comparable, absolutely.
Yeah.
Probably just, we did a, a comparability study on that this year, and we're probably, um, it depends when we did the, when we looked at the, this, our district, and then the ten bigger and ten low, or ten smaller. That's one way to do a comparable, comparability study. We were probably a little bit on the lower end on some of them. I would say most of them. And then we have a, we look a lot of times, we'll look at Davenport and, and Des Moines. And then we're really quite on the lower end of that. So, um, it depends on how you, how you look at those, but we've tried to stay up a little bit. We're probably, out of the eight UENs, we're probably six.
And I ask because I get asked this question. I never know how to answer about the salaries that we, we post. How do we, you know, just justify those? So I just want to be able to give our, our listening and viewing audience, um, a way to, a frame of reference on, on where those figures come from.
Thank you, Rhonda. Um, Sue or Lyle, do you have anything further? I ju, I just want to add that I have been very pleased. I have not been on the, um, finance committee for ten years, but I've probably been on for five plus. And I have always felt that our dealings with Hogan Hansen have been exceptional. I think Dennis has done a great job, and I've always felt that our access to them, um, as board members has been, um, honored, and I appreciate that. There are times that just the three of us as board members are able to talk to the auditor, and I, and I, I think that that transparency and that ability to do that has been really great. So I just want to thank Hogan Hansen for their service and clearly.
The fact that we're changing has nothing to do with any dissatisfaction. It's just good policy once in a while.
Yep.
To change auditors.
Yep. Well, you have a new set of eyes on the numbers. Absolutely. And I just think that's always a wise choice.
That's the one and only reason that we're going to a different auditor.
Yep. And I guess I would just add one comment to Michael and his department and past departments that nineteen straight years of unqualified audits is pretty good financial frugality.
But before that, there was a couple doozies.
You were the only one on the board. Right, I'm not taking any responsibility for that, so.
Yes, that is a good record. Good job, Mike.
Yes, thank you. So, um, is there anything further then on the financial audit for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget amendment. Um, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the amendment of the two thousand seventeen eighteen certified budget as presented.
Sumo.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jesse. And discussion, um, Michael, I know you alluded to the four items, but maybe you could walk us through, um, the background a little bit on the changes to the budget, the certified budget.
Right. Um, the certified budget, we do that every year in April, which you just did not too long ago. So we are now removed from last April by quite a few months. So, uh, when we do a budget, it is divided into four general areas, and it is all the funds together. So every fund that we have from student activity to food service, to debt service, to PEPL, to paying for our insurance, liability insurance through management fund, and then the whole.
to paying for our liability insurance through management fund, and then the whole general fund is all lumped together in those four categories. And those four categories are instruction, all things that go along with supporting instruction, support services, and that can be anything from student support to administrative support to operational support. That's basically the rest of the general fund. And then some ties to minorly, to some other funds. And then the non-instruction funds is food service, basically. And then other expenditures are remodeling, maintenance, and construction that we do in PEPAL and save dollars. So those are basically the four areas that everything has to fit into. Well, this year with, there's really two concerns that I needed to do an amendment for, and that was the non-instructional because we're still kind of honing in on our activity in the food service with the 10 CEP schools. So when that was certified a year ago in April, it was at 6.9 million. And I'm padding it a little bit. All that does is raise the maximum. It doesn't mean we're going to spend any more than we would, but I'm setting that maximum at 8.9 million, giving a little more room just to say we're going to stay within the amount that the board approves. It doesn't mean we're going to raise any more fees. It just means that there may be more activity in the food service than what we originally expected. And it's really kind of going to go down to the wire at the end of the year to see how well that does. But there's definitely been more participation because of that CEP program.
And more activity means more revenue on the revenue side as well.
So when there's more participation, that means more revenue is coming in to offset those higher expenditures. And then the other expenditures for the construction projects in progress, that's really the issue of how fast the WCC project moves. So if they have a great couple of months here and get a little more done than what we were originally expecting, this just sets the maximum expenditures a little higher for 17, 18, just so we don't go over that limit. We've got the bond money to cover it, so the revenue is not the issue. It's just matching the expenditures. And the other two of instruction and support services, I do not anticipate that we're going to go over our original amounts. But I put that in there just as a precaution that we don't go over it just a little bit like we did last time. So it doesn't mean that there's any additional taxes or we can't do that, it's already set. So this is just moving that target a little bit higher to make sure we don't go over it. But there is revenue, there are balances that will cover all of those dollars, even if we did expend that much. It's just more of a precaution of staying within the limits of our certified budget not being exceeded.
So where are the major variable costs such as transportation and utilities that we don't know exactly what they're going to be?
Well, it's really staffing, you know, when we've got issues of how many we have, how many people are hired. Like I said, with that, as I'm projecting, it's not showing that it's going to go over.
Okay.
So I still feel like we're within that. The other services, like you said, transportation and overhead and heat for the winter, and we're kind of past all of those things, hopefully now.
It's almost June.
Yeah.
But those are in the other expenditures?
No, those are in, those are in the second line, support services.
Okay.
So the support services can be student support, admin support, operations.
Okay, but Michael, then looking at this, just adding the recommended increases, that's like a total of 18 million?
It is. Well, the 2 million for food service is, would bring the additional revenue with it, with the participation if we got that high. The 10 million on the construction is just basically saying, if they go a little faster than we anticipated, we've got the authority to spend that money. And the money's already there from the bond, so that's, that's not an issue.
It's just moving from year to year.
So basically, it's 6 million that would be variable.
Yep.
Okay.
And there's balances there to cover all of that three times.
The fact is important note that we're not adding that 10.
Right. That's what I wanted to make sure that we're, it isn't additional property tax.
No.
You said that. I just want to make that crystal clear that to any of these amendments, there will be no additional property tax required.
The rate was set. We cannot change that.
Correct.
Okay. So any other questions for Michael on that budget amendment? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of the 2017-18 budget amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes the action items on our agenda this evening, but we're going to move on to our financial information, which is on page 51. It's item O. And I will turn it back over to Michael Coughlin. We have, you have exhibits at your table.
I did. I gave you a separate packet of information since we only had one meeting in May. We're still in May. I wanted to get that out to just have it on the agenda and then supply you with the normal forms that you get. So the first set of forms is the cash balances for all the funds. Starting on page four is all the revenues for the general fund. And then page six is all the other funds. And then it's divided, starting on page eight, of all the expenditures by object code, which is the type of payment is being made, salary and benefits and so on. And Rhonda, when you're talking about how do our salaries stack up, there's a lot of different kinds of salaries. That's why I hesitated of saying, if there's a particular comparison, we can do that. But to say just by our audit, is it showing, it doesn't get into that kind of breakdown at all. That's within the district for internal reporting, budget planning, and certainly for your information, if you want to see some comparisons and how we stack up to other districts, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, I was, would be just interested in something that shows executive or administrative level, executive, management, administrative, you know, to break it down by, how do you say, HR, the-
Employee groups.
Correct. The employee groups.
Yep. We can certainly do that.
Right. And also something that shows, you know, male, female, and I don't know if that's getting too deep, but those are just ones that I've seen, that I'm used to seeing before that break it down.
We'll have to look at that. I don't know if I have that information.
If you don't have it, it's not that serious. I'm more interested in the work groups than I am-
Yep, I understand.
-that for right now.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike.
Michael, when we, would that, would we run that off of the system that we have? Does that have, because there's other variables too that will be in that, and we'll have to try to tell the story because that's really what I think you're getting at. And so within, when you're looking at averages, we'd have to figure out like how long people have been there because that makes, that makes it, so we'll try to do what we can on that to share the, the story is really what-
There's some really good tools for that.
And I think I'm referring more to an equity report, which is different from a salary report, but the equity reports that I've seen have combined those. I'm just more interested in the work group reports.
Yep, I understand. Page 14 is the one that we've been looking at more of a, as a reference of how we're doing for the year because sometimes numbers are hard to, it's hard to say, well, where, how do we compare to where we've been? And are we on track with what we've been planning? So on page 14, the revenues in the top green section, you do have colors, right? Do you have green color on there? Sometimes I make the copies and don't get it the way I want, but, so if you look at that, the top line, you can see the top green line, we are right almost exactly in the same range as we have been the last four years, five years, about 81% of our revenue coming in, a little over a million, or $100 million. So that's all on track. The expenditures then in comparison to this time of year are right around $90 million or 70% of the budget. And again, remember the anomaly of getting to June and it's really like reporting three months at once when we have June, July, and August salaries to pay for teachers. So we start them in September and then we pay three out in June, June, July, and August. So you'll see a jump in, as we get to June as comparison. Because you look at this and say, we're at 90 million now and we only have two months to go. It's not. We have four months to go actually with, with our main salary group. So we are on track for that. The rest of the funds on page 15 are all within the parameters that we're expecting and things are going well. I'm not going to get into a lot of this tonight, but on 16, I gave you another report that I don't know if I have given you before, but this talks about how we stack up to meeting our goals for unspent balance, unspent authorized budget, solvency, what our certified budget is, and that's what we were just talking about, are we staying within our ranges? And by that, we are, we should be within our ranges except for non-instruction and the other, the projects. So these are, these are tools that I load actual expenditures in all year. Every line item out of the budget goes in this. And then this program projects by the trends from the previous years, what our balances are going to be at the end. Now, with that, takes a scrutinizing eye of knowing there are some differences this year. For instance, the one that I have told you about, the technology coming out of general fund rather than, rather than PEPAL. So the, a trend projection they're using is not exactly what I would be expecting out of experience. So that's why I don't hang on these numbers 100%, but it gives me a good trend line to follow. So that's why even though these numbers are saying we're fine on the certified budget, I'm saying there's some possibilities that we need to raise it a little bit just to meet the individual situation of the year. And then my favorite graph all year is on page 18. So this now quantifies that we have cash in the bank to back up all of these reports. And our cash this year and the general fund is better than the last two years. But there are things coming up at the end of the year that may flatten that out a little bit, so that's my job of watching all of that. So the general fund is staying healthy. Management fund is where we expect. The sales tax fund, you see that one higher box in the middle, that's the bond money that's being used now for WCC projects. You can keep track of that separately and then it shows the amount over on the right-hand side in the green. And then PEPAL is following about the same pattern as it has as we go into summer and then we'll start spending some of that money for projects that we have lined up on that facility project sheet for PEPAL. So things are exactly where we expect them to be.
Yeah. Michael, just a question here. I know we talked about this in the past, but print shop, well, we seem to keep in a pretty steady decline. We're now to about, what, 61,000 and a hole on that.
The print shop has been handled to show all of their actual expenditures all year, but at the end of the year, the cost of their equipment is shifted into PEPAL. We want to keep track of it to kind of know what they're doing, but at the end of the year, we make an adjustment for that because they're not really set up to charge to cover their equipment. They're set up to charge to cover their operation. So that's how we've been handling it the last several years.
So we should see something closer to what, end of year, 2017 here, another month or so?
Yep. It is, it is a concern. It is something that we need to review and say, we give such a good deal to internal printing and we extend some of that to some outside sources, and maybe we need to adjust some of those prices a little bit. But it's not really out of line from where it's been the last couple of years.
It's kind of dropping the bucket overall when you look at it, but just the trend is-
Well, it's always been, until the last two years, it's been part of the general fund. So you never saw a profit loss for a print shop. Now it's sticking out. But that's how we're handling it. So the, the operational piece of it, it's covering that, but not the equipment.
On the sales tax fund, I'm assuming there will be big charges the next three months.
I didn't hear all of that.
There'll be large charges the next three months on the sales tax fund.
I'm guessing so with, with the project hitting full speed out there and just depends on the progress.
The top month would probably be September for August. Well, August might be the top.
Well, just on past, I think the highest we've had in a project is between 1.5 and 1.8. That was kind of the highest month we ever paid out.
Okay.
Anything further then for Michael? It is really nice to see that green bar up there at the top on the general fund. Nice, nice and tall. I like that. So, all right. With that, I will then turn it over. Thank you, Michael, very much.
You're welcome.
I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for the superintendent's report.
Sure, just a few things. First of all, I know we had board appreciation, board recognition and appreciation week last week, and we had the opportunity to sit down to lunch together, but I also wanted to just note, make note of that here, you know, with the, with the audience. The, the school board, it's not a paid position. There are states where the school board positions are paid, but Iowa is not one of them. And so I just wanted to, you know, to just publicly recognize the time, the guidance, the commitment, the support, the love for kids that each member of this board shows every single time that you come to the table and in between meetings when somebody's calling you and asking questions. I just, we owe so much gratitude to our board members and they, they do such a good job of, of asking questions and, and making decisions and keeping a great vision. And so I just, there's, there's no way to adequately thank you right here in front of everyone, but it's, I just wanted to make note of that. So thank you so much for what you do. The second thing I wanted to note is I think many of our viewers and other people have read in the paper, the good news about the McElroy Trust grant that was recently awarded to Waterloo schools in the, in the amount of 1.5 million dollars. And so as I've been kind of pounding the pavement, sharing that message and going out to elementary schools, talking, because we're going to phase this in, the opportunity to add experiences and to add service learning opportunities for our students is really a great thing for Waterloo. I think it sets us apart from other districts. And so I've been out sharing that message with elementary schools, you know, meeting with the staff and, and the ideas that are already being generated are amazing. I was just out at Cunningham today and after, before I left, somebody came running up and said, you know what, I heard about this one great project that somebody else did and, and I think maybe we should try to work that in. And I thought those were really good ideas. And so those, it's starting to percolate or bubble, the ideas. And so I, we are indebted to McElroy Trust for believing in us and supporting us. And that is a great message to share, but also great work to do for the foundation piece. And then I just think the last thing is as we go into May with only one boarding, board meeting in May, I think that it seems really odd that we're already talking about end-of-the-year procedures. I saw something come out from one of the secretaries that said, you know, as we close down the year, here's what you need to do. And it just, I thought, I don't know how that happened. I don't know how that happened. And so I'm sure when it gets to Sue, she will remind all of the students to stay at it and keep working and, and, you know- it and keep working and, and, you know, yeah, work, work all the way to the end. And, but I also would, would talk to parents, this is now the perfect time for parents to be asking questions of the, of their, their children's teachers about book recommendations, summer recommendations, there's all kinds of camps and activities all throughout the Cedar Valley that, that students can go to. And so I would just urge people, while our staff is right here, to ask them the questions about how they can support their children during the year is, is just a great idea, so. I think they are posted on the website, and we have, I, I know that for the elementary students, we still do actual flyers, hard flyers, and so as a mom of two elementary kids, and their, their folder each week, I get lots of opportunities that, whether it's a Sportsplex or U&amp;I or, or Hawkeye, I got one a couple weeks ago from Hawkeye. So there's a lot of options that come home, but I think, Tara, do we have some things published on the web, at different places? Oh, that's right, the 88, that hurts, doesn't, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that has changed a little bit when we get materials, so, yeah. Yeah, I know. But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindeman. I will start down to my right and start with Lyle this evening for board comments.
Okay, first of all, thank you to the East High Culinary Team for the great school board recognition luncheon. That was terrific, as usual. And congratulations to the West High Culinary Team for their success at the competition.
And they're going to Vegas now, did you hear that?
They won that trip, how awesome.
Yeah, that'll be a great experience for them, so.
Yeah, that'll be on our next board agenda in June with samples. Thank you, Lyle. And Aster?
Just a quick congratulations to the Coach Frederick Cody and the East High Soccer Team. I believe two wins in a row. I don't think they had a win for 10 years. And they also signed, I asked this question at the board luncheon on Thursday, was it the first soccer player to receive a college scholarship? And he believed so, so congratulations to that young man and the whole program, they're doing wonderful things.
That's great. Yeah, he's going to Mount Mercy.
Yeah, Mount Mercy on a full ride scholarship, I believe.
Yep.
Soccer. Had a chance to sit with him at the luncheon, so it was nice.
Yes, Rhonda?
Well, Aster beat me to that, but I wanted to also say thank you to Ms. Wright, because you really touched me tonight, so I just want to say thank you, because Aster took mine.
That's right.
Well, you got a good one, too.
Wait till you get to the end like me, and I never have any left, so, okay, Sue?
Well, I don't want to take up too much time, but again, I wanted to thank the East High kids, they were great hospitality hosts, and the food was wonderful. Steak, I couldn't believe it, it was very good. And also, end of the year here again, and to stay with my mantra, I have a quote here, what kind of athlete sees the finish line ahead and slows down? So remember the end of the school year and finish strong. And our graduates, we won't see them again, but best of luck, we'll see you at the ceremonies, so, but just continue to work hard and, and your efforts will pay off. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Jesse?
I had two tonight, one is just, had a, just an interesting, meanwhile, I've had just interesting moments this weekend, and just a, it was just a subtle reminder of how often we take for granted the basic needs of food, love, shelter, home. And see that touch somebody, and it was a, just a very good moment, and just think about, you know, our children are here in our district, and, you know, think about maybe some better need one of those, you know, every day, and if each of us could reach, reach out a little bit more and try to fill that void for someone, that's a good thing. And then on the other positive note, just a congratulation to the track team, we have several kids will be participating in the state track meet this week, so good luck to both East and West High Track Teams, boys and girls.
Thank you, Jesse. India?
I do not have anything.
Can I take it?
Excellent. I just want to say again, congratulations to all of our 2018 grads, it's so exciting, and I actually have one, so then I'm extra proud mama. But Expo will graduate on Wednesday, May 30th, East High will graduate on Thursday, May 31st, and West High will graduate on Friday, June 1st. So think and, and give good wishes to all of our 2018 graduates. It's one of the best things we get to do as board members, is do those ceremonies and see those kiddos that have come across the stage. It makes my heart happy. So our next board meeting will be on June 11th, just for everyone's calendar. And at this point, that concludes our, our regular board meeting. We do have a student level five grievance that we will be taking just a short five-minute recess and moving to a room that has a little bit better interface with our families. So with that, we will just be on recess for about five minutes and meet us down at 1:10. So if you guys want to use the restroom up here.